Teachers, principals, district leaders and community partners packed the auditorium at the Birmingham City Schools Central Office, all excited to hear just how BCS made significant gains on the latest Alabama State Department of Education annual report card.
For the first time since the state began issuing this annual report card, Birmingham City Schools has earned its highest score ever, a 77.
BCS's 2024-2025 state report card numerical grade represents a three-point increase compared to last year's report card score and an impressive 7% increase over the span of three years.
This year's report card increase reflects increase in ELA, which is English Language Arts and Mathematics district-wide. Our student scores improved by either 4% to 5% in either area, meaning that more students are scoring proficient. That's tremendous for Birmingham City Schools.
It is a great day in BCS and we should all be excited and celebrate, not only the people that's behind us, but also the people that are our parents and our students. This doesn't happen by happen chance.
The report card also indicates the district made tremendous strides in lowering the number of BCS schools with an F-letter grade from 15 in 2023 to now just one in 2025.
Birmingham City Schools, we have reduced the number of schools rated as an F by 93%.
Booker T. Washington K-8 School is one of the district's most improved schools as their overall letter grade went from an F to a very impressive B. The incredible success of Booker T. Washington K-8 can be credited to the implementation of innovative learning programs such as the school's dual-language immersion program recommended by Birmingham City Schools Superintendent Dr. Mark Sullivan.
He came to a principals' meeting last year and said, "Look, we want to see As and Bs on those report cards." I went back to my school and I said, "Dr. Sullivan said he wants a B." And we began working each and every day, weekly planning meetings to make sure that that happened.
The district also saw a significant decrease in chronic absenteeism on the latest state report card as the rate went from 29% in 2023 to now just 14% in 2025.
The success that we have seen, it doesn't happen by accident. It is a result of intentional strategies implemented after the COVID-19 pandemic.
One of those key strategies is intercession. This approach provides students with support in overcoming learning loss and offers opportunities for enrichment. Intercession is offered to all of our BCS scholars in the fall, winter, and spring.
We are excited about the work that's happening in Birmingham City Schools, but we are not satisfied.
We will continue to strengthen our instructional practices. We want to expand academic and enrichment opportunities. We're going to continue to invest in professional learning for all teachers and staff. And then we want to deepen our partnerships.
The district is striving for its first-ever B on the next state report card, and BCS is just three points shy of achieving that major milestone. Until then, I'm Jalen Holloway, BCS Media.
When I enrolled in the BCS Virtual Academy of Learning, I discovered that learning from home doesn't mean being alone. With innovative programs and classes, I still have a full Birmingham City Schools experience. BCS Virtual Academy offers free technology, a laptop, and Wi-Fi, so every student can stay connected. Because I get mentoring and encouragement, I'm one step closer to my goals. I'm building the skills I need to succeed in college and in my career.
It was once said that if you look good, then you feel good.
And that's what cosmetology and barbering does. It lends to the inner and most definitely to the outer being of the person.
Students in PD Jackson Olend High School's cosmetology and barbering program are spending valuable time in the lab learning about the importance of proper hair care.
The parts of the heads, it was very, I could say, interesting to learn about because at first I thought it was just, oh, you just wash it and comb it out, but you also got to detangle, you got to make sure there's no infection.
Understanding the origins of cosmetology is helping first-year students in the program like Ariel Terrell and her plans after graduation.
I want to do it for a career, but also I want to learn more. Ms. McFarlane, she really teaches us how to do more like hairstyles that we wouldn't do on a regular.
For some, cosmetology could be seen as a female-oriented profession. However, Jordan Gilbert is changing the narrative. What does it mean to you to know how to braid hair?
I think it made me unique. I didn't really know how to braid, but Ms. McFarlane helped me out. Coming into cosmetology, I thought it was just barbering, but she helped me spread my varieties.
Ms. Kim McFarlane, who's been a cosmetology and barbering teacher for nearly two decades, says the field is steadily evolving.
In cosmetology, with the new technology, students are learning a faster way of completing a skill set.
Through the program, these students have the ability to earn short-term certifications, which could turn into long-term certifications and licensing after graduation. Whether it's the hair and bone braid or any other hairstyle, Ms. McFarlane believes in challenging her students every day.
My standard and my goal for my students is excellence, so I demand that they do their best.
Am I doing a wash? So, okay.
Are you doing a what?
A shampoo.
A shampoo and conditioning.
Talk to me about Ms. McFarlane's tough love.
I will say we'll wash. No, we have to shampoo and condition. So it was like little things that she'll have us say or do or start over again. Like, we'll do a braid and she'll be like, "Oh, that looks nice," start over again. And we're just, you know, embedded into our heads.
These students are busy preparing for the Alabama Skills USA competition coming up very soon, so don't be surprised if you become one of their clients in the future. I'm Jalen Holloway, BCS Media.
My name is Sarah Brown. I'm the CMP manager at Parker High School. So when I get up in the morning at four o'clock, I have to come in and I like cut on the computer to make sure that the computer worked. Then I have to go over the menu to make sure everything gets prepared. We had to prepare the day before. And then after then, we come out, I serve the kids for breakfast. Once I serve the breakfast, I go back, you know, get prepared for lunch. And then once we get prepared for lunch, we come out and we feed the kids.
My name is Denise Hasbert. I serve as one of the assistant principals here, and we work closely with Ms. Brown. She is awesome. She makes sure our students' needs are met. If children come in late, the buses, the parents, they will, we can bring the kids here to Ms. Brown, and she's going to feed these children. Sometimes the children ask for extras, and she makes sure those kids get exactly what they need so they won't go home hungry. So Ms. Brown is just the best. Well, first, I'm alumni, that's number one, and I enjoy serving the kids, just watching the kids eat, to make sure they have a good balanced nutritional meal, to prepare for them to know exactly what's on the menu, make sure they pick up a meat, a grain, a fruit, a vegetable, and a milk. That's the five items. I started back in 1989 at Watley Elementary School, left Watley Elementary School, went to Avondale as a worker, left Avondale, went to Araton, then I left Araton. And also, that's when I got my managing position and went to Glen Iris as a manager for Glen Iris. Stayed there for 12 years at Glen Iris, then I transferred over to Parker. I enjoy the people. I love my principal, and I enjoy the kids. And just to think that I have graduated from Parker, that I'm able to come back to the school that I actually graduated from to serve these, to serve the kids.
Hello, my name is Tamisha Jackson. I am the Academy of Business and Finance Coordinator here at Woodline Magnet High School. In the academy, students receive an opportunity to jumpstart their careers by participating in programs that teaches them how to start their own businesses, how to manage money, provide internships. They take college courses by way of dual enrollment, as well as be mentored by industry professionals. If you would like to learn more information on the Academy of Business and Finance, please call 205-231-8000. That's 205-231-8000.
Up ten, turn. Dress right, dress. Rig, front.
The JROTC program, it is not designed to put cadets into the military.
Left, left. Hey, whoa!
It's designed to motivate young people to become better citizens.
Left, left, come left, march, left.
What you see here is a very devoted group of young cadets at Winona High School.
Rein, look. Company, up ten, turn.
Learning important life skills in the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps taught by First Sergeant Senior Army Instructor Alfred McMillan. What does he mean to be a junior ROTC cadet?
It means being a leader and learning how to be a leader. It means having challenges you have to face, and it's a lot of discipline, but it makes you be a better person.
March, left, come left, march, left.
How exactly has being a cadet helped you as a person?
JROTC has shown me that this is necessary through life. It keeps me out of trouble. It helps me better myself.
Exactly how much did you know about the junior ROTC program before joining?
I knew about like military time and stuff like that, but being in the ROTC program taught me a lot of like leadership, being able to be in formation.
For cadets who are interested in joining the armed forces, the junior ROTC program offers them credentials that are very beneficial after high school.
If they do three years, complete three years of JROTC, they will credential as a credential cadet, where if they decide to go into the military, they will not go in as an entry level enlisted one, but they'll go in as an enlisted three.
Tell me, will you encourage others to join the junior ROTC program?
I've motivated like three of my friends to join the program. It's great.
Sergeant McMillan believes the junior ROTC program can help students find that sense of purpose.
A lot of our kids, we don't know what we want to do out of high school, and I'm a prime example myself. I was, I'm a product of Birmingham City School system, and upon graduating, I really didn't know what I wanted to do, and I did four years of ROTC.
Those four years turned into more than two decades in the service, and now Sergeant McMillan is paying it forward, inspiring his students. Now, do you plan to join a military branch? If so, which one?
I will be planning to go to the Army. I do have plans to go to the Air Force after I leave high school.
Left, come left, march.
I'm Jalen Holloway, BCS Media.
Hi, I'm Tommy Paladino with BCS Media. We're here at Ramsey High School to talk to one of their unsung heroes, Ms. Tabitha Mose. Let's go meet her.
My name is Tabitha Mose. I teach at Ramsey High School. I've been teaching for over 25 years. Currently, I teach pre-AP Algebra I, pre-AP Algebra II, and AP Precal. I love teaching, and my teaching passion came from teaching Sunday School. I like to see the aha moment when a student is learning something and once they grasp the understanding of the objective and what they have been taught.
I'm glad to have been taught by her for the past two years, and she has made my experience at Ramsey High School better. Ms. Mose loves math. I love math, so we just love like, it shows when we're working together. She has us write it out and explain like what we're doing so we know exactly what we're doing.
I like to meet students where they are. I give a pre-test, I find out what they know, and from that point, I can bring them up to where they need to be.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Gilbert, the academy coordinator here at Ramsey High School. In the academy of law, students engage in discussions surrounding legal topics, court cases, mock trials, visit colleges, network with attorneys and judges, all in an effort to better prepare them for their future legal careers. For more information, email me at jgilbert@bhm.k12.al.us.
These Huffman High School Academy of Architecture and Construction students are in the process of bringing life to this tiny home. Now tell us exactly where you all are in the construction phase of building the tiny house and what exactly is left to do.
Like this week, we just put the drawwall and the finishing wall and stuff like that. We got all the drawwells in the ceiling, got all the walls down. We got some more drawwall to put up and stuff, like all the walls and here and stuff. And what we got left, we got to do like the wiring and like the, for all the power and stuff, all the cables and stuff, the water, the water and heat, and stuff like that, and put the rest of the walls up over here.
What specifically do you think you're learning from building this tiny house?
When we've been working on this tiny house, it's like the trailer, like we really started building this in the ground up, and I feel like I've really learned a lot doing this project because like it taught me how to like do the wiring.
We had to manually cut these and put all the wires throughout the whole house, like under all these is wires throughout this whole thing.
Now, prior to start work on this tiny home, the construction students collaborated with these architecture students who designed the house inside this very exclusive printing and design room.
The front is exactly how I look with those three trans and windows. So we had to make sure that we got that.
Tell people what all goes into you all's contributions to the tiny house from the architecture side of things.
We know, we talk about the plug, the wires, and how stuff is going to be as far as it come with building the tiny house. When we come in here, it's basically like a sketch. We sketch it out, we look at it, talk about where everything going to be as far as the plugs.
Through the Academy of Architecture and Construction, these students have the choice of either the architecture or construction pathway. What is most intriguing to you about construction?
And I always had a passion for construction, ever since I was a little boy, ever since I was like 10, nine, because I used to, you know, I used to build stuff for my granddaddy. And this, ever since then, I, it's, yeah, I like it, it's fun.
This is Terrence Marzett, Huffman's lead architecture and construction instructor. Talk about how architecture and construction students help one another.
They both go together hand in hand, side by side, just like in the real world. Once these students design it, those construction students, they give input into design so far as the architectural part.
The academy has a partnership with the National Academy Foundation, along with the University of Alabama at Birmingham, with the goal being to support these scholars in their future endeavors after they graduate high school. Exactly what types of opportunities are available to these students through this academy?
The actual drafting students, they have an opportunity to get their professional certification, as well as an actual certification in the field of their choice, as well as the actual construction students.
Exactly how is being in this academy benefiting you?
I appreciate this class because it gave me, it gave me opportunities and different, different things to learn and put on my mind and stuff like that. So, and it really, it really gets you started, like what you want to do with your life and like career-wise and stuff like that.
Talk about how this academy is potentially life-changing for you all as students.
Some students, you know, they might want to pursue a career in construction, and you know, I feel like this class and architecture class, this is a great place to start. Like, it gives you all the tips you need to know, everything you need to know, very safe environment, very fun environment.
So now AI is coming into play. So our next tiny house that we're going to go ahead and do, we're going to go ahead and incorporate with AI, artificial intelligent intelligence.
As you can see, these scholars are already very busy brainstorming ideas for the academy's next tiny home project as they plan to complete the current tiny home very, very soon. I'm Jalen Holloway, BCS Media.
Hi, my name is Danielle Milliner, and I work for Birmingham City Schools. I actually have two jobs. I am a bus driver. My bus is 2018-1, and I'm a school teacher. I teach sixth grade English. I teach at Hayes K-8. I pick up in the Kingston community, and there are a large amount of students that I pick up. There are actually two stops in Kingston, so I bring about 65 to 70 students a day.
Teachers, principals, district leaders, and community partners packed the auditorium at the Birmingham City Schools Central Office, all excited to hear just... Teachers, principals, district leaders, and community partners packed the auditorium at the Birmingham City Schools Central Office, all excited to hear just how BCS made significant gains on the latest Alabama State Department of Education annual report card.
For the first time since the state began issuing this annual report card, Birmingham City Schools has earned its highest score ever, a 77.
BCS's 2024-2025 state report card numerical grade represents a three-point increase compared to last year's report card score and an impressive 7% increase over the span of three years.
This year's report card increase reflects increase in ELA, which is English Language Arts and Mathematics district-wide. Our student scores improved by either 4% to 5% in either area, meaning that more students are scoring proficient. That's tremendous for Birmingham City Schools.
It is a great day in BCS, and we should all be excited and celebrate, not only the people that's behind us, but also the people that are our parents and our students. This doesn't happen by happen chance.
The report card also indicates the district made tremendous strides in lowering the number of BCS schools with an F-letter grade from 15 in 2023 to now just one in 2025.
Birmingham City Schools, we have reduced the number of schools rated as an F by 93%.
Booker T. Washington K-8 School is one of the district's most improved schools as their overall letter grade went from an F to a very impressive B. The incredible success of Booker T. Washington K-8 can be credited to the implementation of innovative learning programs such as the school's dual-language immersion program recommended by Birmingham City Schools Superintendent Dr. Mark Sullivan.
He came to a principals' meeting last year and said, "Look, we want to see As and Bs on those report cards." I went back to my school and I said, "Dr. Sullivan said he wants a B." And we began working each and every day, weekly planning meetings to make sure that that happened.
The district also saw a significant decrease in chronic absenteeism on the latest state report card as the rate went from 29% in 2023 to now just 14% in 2025.
The success that we have seen, it doesn't happen by accident. It is a result of intentional strategies implemented after the COVID-19 pandemic.
One of those key strategies is intercession. This approach provides students with support in overcoming learning loss and offers opportunities for enrichment. Intercession is offered to all of our BCS scholars in the fall, winter, and spring.
We are excited about the work that's happening in Birmingham City Schools, but we are not satisfied.
We will continue to strengthen our instructional practices. We want to expand academic and enrichment opportunities. We're going to continue to invest in professional learning for all teachers and staff. And then we want to deepen our partnerships.
The district is striving for its first-ever B on the next state report card, and BCS is just three points shy of achieving that major milestone. Until then, I'm Jalen Holloway, BCS Media.
When I enrolled in the BCS Virtual Academy of Learning, I discovered that learning from home doesn't mean being alone. With innovative programs and classes, I still have a full Birmingham City Schools experience. BCS Virtual Academy offers free technology, a laptop, and Wi-Fi, so every student can stay connected. Because I get mentoring and encouragement, I'm one step closer to my goals. I'm building the skills I need to succeed in college and in my career.
It was once said that if you look good, then you feel good.
And that's what cosmetology and barbering does. It lends to the inner and most definitely to the outer being of the person.
Students in PD Jackson Olend High School's cosmetology and barbering program are spending valuable time in the lab learning about the importance of proper hair care.
The parts of the heads, it was very, I could say, interesting to learn about because at first I thought it was just, oh, you just wash it and comb it out, but you also got to detangle, you got to make sure there's no infection.
Understanding the origins of cosmetology is helping first-year students in the program like Ariel Terrell and her plans after graduation.
I want to do it for a career, but also I want to learn more. Ms. McFarlane, she really teaches us how to do... Ms. McFarlane, she really teaches us how to do more like hairstyles that we wanna do on a regular.
For some, cosmetology could be seen as a female-oriented profession. However, Jordan Gilbert is changing the narrative. What does it mean to you to know how to braid hair?
I think it made me unique. I didn't really know how to braid, but Ms. McFarlane helped me out. Uh coming into cosmetology, I thought it was just barbering, but she helped me expand my varieties.
Ms. Kim McFarlane, who's been a cosmetology and barbering teacher for nearly two decades, says the field is steadily evolving.
In cosmetology, with the new technology, uh students are learning a faster way of completing a skill set.
Through the program, these students have the ability to earn short-term certifications, which could turn into long-term certifications and licensing after graduation. Whether it's the hair and bone braid or any other hairstyle, Ms. McFarlane believes in challenging her students every day.
My standard and my goal for my students is excellence, so I demand that they do their best.
Am I doing a wash? So, okay.
Are you doing a what?
A wash.
A shampoo.
Oh, shampoo, sh- a shampoo and conditioner.
Talk to me about Ms. McFarlane's tough love.
I will say we'll wash. No, we have to shampoo and condition. So it was like little things that she'll have us say or do or start over again, like we'll do a braid and she'll be like, oh, that looks nice, start over again. And we're just, you know, you know, embedded into our heads.
These students are busy preparing for the Alabama Skills USA competition coming up very soon, so don't be surprised if you become one of their clients in the future. I'm Jalen Holloway, BCS Media.
My name is Sarah.
Twenty-five. Uh this meeting is called to order. The mission of the Birmingham City Schools is to guide all students to achieve excellence in a safe, secure, and nurturing environment.
Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh I'm gonna ask that we amend the agenda for just a second. We're gonna move item H up to the first item. Um we have someone online who is um has a scheduling conflict. And with that said, we'll start with our presentations and we'll start with our operations presentation and I see Mr. Moore here, so Mr. Moore, if you would give us an update on the 2101 building.
All right. One, two, one, two. All right, good afternoon, President Collins, Vice President Sullivan, and to the entire board, Superintendent, thank you once more again. So today, we're here now for our central office relocation update. Um I do want to introduce to some, I guess, um our Assistant Director for Logistics and Planning, Mr. Fred Flowers, who's part of the team. Many of you are familiar with Mr. Flowers, he was uh with one of our former architects and did really good work on Martha Gaskin, and so he's part of the team now. And as we move forward, be one of the primary liaisons on the BCS team for this relocation project, along with all our other capital projects. And so, we are now at a good phase. And so, um as we mentioned, we already have selected an architect, and so Argo Contractors is the general contractor. Right now, they're in the prepping phase and sending some metals to the architect. Um there's no change in the priorities of the building. Uh obviously, the roof and IT is gonna be major activities that'll be getting started first. Uh Argo has also begun walking and prepping the building, getting unneeded necessary items out of the building to begin work. All the subcontractors are getting their contracts as well from Argo, and then we're navigating through the process um with City of Birmingham. So, Mr. Flowers, I kinda go over the next few steps.
So at this stage, uh obviously, you know, the bid was awarded on October fourteenth. The contractor received a letter of intent so that they were not just having to sit around and wait to engage with their subcontractors and everything, that's why they have that complete. So they've already started based on that letter of intent, and there are actually some pieces of the building that are already coming out. If you've been in there and you saw the rolling file folders, some of that's already starting to be broken down, those big rolling files in there. And the contract is now in Argo's hands, it is completed through DCM. So we just got word of that uh yesterday. So Argo is um basically getting ready to truly rock and roll. Uh they figured out, got, get one of the gates running and they're getting ready to have comfort systems come in there and start working on the HVAC systems.
So I know we had a notice to proceed on November thirty, on November third, and so that process is currently being, uh continuing to move on, and we're still currently within the budget of twenty-four million for this project. We do have members of the team that's in the audience of KPS, Tyler, and of course Steel City in a few years. Any questions? Ms. Moore?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh the ALSDE approval, is that expected to fall within our timeline and keep us within timeline?
Yes.
Assuming they're gonna say yes in a reasonable amount of time?
No, that, no, Alabama State Department of Education and Department of Construction Management, they're done. They, the contract, uh they have the contract, when it said pending return, at the time this slide was created, it came sliding in.
Okay, we've got it.
So we have it.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. President, next, uh our team went to Harvard this past summer and uh at the PELP program, uh we are gonna ask the team members to come up to share our problem of practice. Uh this year, we're working uh our efforts towards improving our middle school outcomes. And we have Mrs. Ishman, Dr. Ishman, I'm sorry, Ms. Tatum, as well as Dr. Williams, and we have Dr. Williams on the Zoom call. So, Dr. Williams, are you there? Doesn't sound like she's there. Well, Ms. Tatum? Dr. Ishman, Dr. Williams, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Board President Sermon, Vice President, uh Mr. Sullivan, Superintendent, Dr. Sullivan, uh and board members. We wanna just say, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be a part of the Public Education Leadership Project at Harvard. Uh there's not many conferences I've been to in my tenure, my career, that I come back and say, this is pretty awesome, but this work at Harvard is certainly on a different level, and we appreciate that opportunity to do so. The team itself consisted of uh Dr. Craig Witherspoon, the Instructional Superintendent for Network One, Dr. Christy Williams, uh who is the uh six-through-eight Literacy and Humanity Coordinator, Dr. Ishman, the Principal at Booker T. Washington, the newly appointed, uh I guess I should say anointed, Dr. Nakidra Ward-Williams, uh Principal at Smith Middle School, and uh Dr. Pamela Williams, our Academic Officer, and Dr. Sullivan, of course, Ms. Adrian Mulberry, and of course, uh myself. And again, we just wanna thank you for the experience. Our problem of practice that we identified, oh, I guess I'm handling this, I forgot about this, I'm doing mine. Uh BCS experienced inconsistent implementation of high-quality grade-level instruction in grade six through eight, resulting in sixty percent of our middle school students not on grade level in reading, and eighty-five percent not on grade level in mathematics. And based on our problem of practice, we've come up with the following theories of actions.
Yes, we began with saying, if we create and implement a district system of support for middle school principals and teachers on the implementation of high-quality, student-centered instruction that aligns with the theory of middle school learning, provide consistent, high-quality differentiated professional development in literacy and math using district instructional frameworks, use data to inform instructional decisions about implementation of high-quality, student-centered instruction, student and employee surveys, district benchmark data, state achievement, classroom observations, and teacher and principal evaluations, then we will achieve coherence in the understanding and implementation of high-quality, student-centered instruction across the district, will build capacity for teachers and principals to deliver, sustain, and support consistent, high-quality, student-centered instruction, will observe that all students will have access to consistent, high-quality, student-centered instruction.
So that we will have a cohesive framework for implementing and monitoring high-quality instruction across the district, so that students experience a positive learning environment with well-designed curriculum, effective teaching strategies, and scaffolding for learning with a focus on student engagement, so that all data points indicate the desired results for principals, teachers, and students.
Good afternoon.
Is Dr. Williams on?
Can you hear me?
Still not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon, uh Board President, Board Vice President, Board members, and Dr. Sullivan. As Dr. Sullivan shared, we spent a week in Harvard talking about our problem of practice, and as you can see, it was very, very thorough, very focused on middle school instruction. So we developed strategies to align with that problem of practice. Strategy one, we wanted to develop a cohesive professional learning system. We identified that our middle schools, we wanted to make sure they had high-quality instruction. So the goal was to establish a district-wide sequential repository for professional learning, where we made sure it was aligned to our instructional priorities, our curriculum standards, and making sure it's based on needs of teachers differentiated. This repository would serve as the hub for ongoing training and best practices and implementation and support. So we identify who will do what, by when, and what barriers, and how we will overcome the barriers. Our main goal was to create a professional development calendar. That work had started, we began immediately when we came back August fourth with our back-to-school PD. We wanted to make sure we set clear communications throughout all of our academic and instructional departments, from curriculum to student support, special education, EL, um even our professional learning department were involved in this process. Um Instructional Superintendents engaged this work as they worked through the strategic plan priorities, uh by creating a professional development calendar that we actually began implementing last week. Also, we developed, um we're developing protocols for principals on a district-wide walkthrough form led by our Instructional Superintendents. We wanna build, um we wanna build a, a psychological safety, um support for our, our schools and our teachers so that we can learn and grow together on best practices for instruction. Next slide. Strategy two, we wanna make sure that this professional learning is purposely aligned to the frameworks, not just for teachers, but also for principals, making sure that we provide that same support for our leaders in the district on what high-quality instruction looks like in the middle school. We realize that we've done a very good job, thorough job of building quality instruction in our elementary schools, is evident by the data. We are building those same structures now in middle schools, and we are seeing the data improve. So we wanna make sure we provide those same structures and systems and observation protocols so that we can align the work in middle schools to achieve a higher level. So we're creating a district-wide observation form, the ISs are working on that with the Academics Division. We're also developing a professional learning plan aligned to the instructional frameworks where we will provide the training for principals and teachers systematically so that we can calibrate on what is working, what is best practice, and how do we align it with our data.
So aligned with this work, we've also developed short-term and long-term goals. Our short-term goals are well underway, uh some of them, you know, nearly completed. Uh district, uh coming up with district messaging, as well as identifying district teams to meet on a consistent basis to make sure that this work continues to move forward. Uh we have focus groups on observation forms, uh working with the Instructional Superintendents and those who are directly impacting the, that particular work. We've creating, are working on creating calendars for professional development for teachers as well as principals, and making sure that the professional developments are aligned, uh and also developing training modules and a repository for teachers on the topics, excuse me, including instructional framework, uh depth of knowledge, differentiated instruction, multi-tier student support, proficiency skills, and instructional support. Our long-term goals, uh is what we hope to accomplish and will accomplish, I shouldn't say hope, we will do this. Uh our teachers uh will be facilitators of high-quality instructions based on components that are identified in our walkthrough form. Uh we'll make sure that principals effectively identify high-quality instruction and provide coaching and support when needed, and also develop principals and teacher leaders to continue to champion this work uh in the, into the future. And there's our PELP in Harvard team. Success starts here. Any questions?
Good afternoon, everyone. Well, first I wanna tip my hat to you all for investing in PELP and in the system. Having participated in 2024 and gone through the program, I know that it is intense. I think I was up until midnight or 1:00 AM each night just reading over those cases and just making sure um that I was fully prepared to be fully engaged, and so I wanna say thank you for taking time away from the schools to be able to invest there. Um, Dr. Ishman, I wanna point for our children how you're a master shifter of the culture and also you are a strategist when it comes to partnerships. And so many of the partners at Washington K eight, I get to talk to them, and it's the school that they wanna be in, they, you know, the plan, it's being worked out, so it's not just on paper, it's not just in a book, it's actually alive, and it's being put into place, and so thank you for that. And I also just wanna share with my colleagues and everyone who's listening, two incidents that happened this past week. On Thursday, on Friday, I was off of Sixth Avenue at the Family Dollar that's right in front of Washington K eight, and three young men from the school, they saw me and they connected, and they were telling me that their school had a B, and they were just so excited and pumped up. One had been missing school, I said, hey, we're trying to get to the A, like you can't be missing school. And so he talked about, we talked to his dad, and we talked to his coach right there in the store, and then the gentleman actually took my groceries to the car for me. And so I want you guys to know that, you know, the children feel those wins, and they know what it's like to have that support and to have that, the, that victory, and they're excited about keeping their success moving forward. Similarly, on this past Sunday, I saw two of your students, and one of them told me that she is speaking Spanish. So she's in the um, the dual-language emergence program, and she said, I saw you and my principal on TV and nobody believed that you were my coach. I said, well, you tell them I am your coach, and I just want you to know that that pride and that joy is palpable, and the parents feel it, the children, and they know that it's not stopping here, that they're continuing to move forward. So that's just my success and my thank yous that I wanted to get out first before I asked a question.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You guys have been working on this plan since the summer, so um can you just kinda share what that buy-in looks like now that we're, um, we're in quarter two of the school year?
Well, it's definitely time. Being a K eight principal, I understand what. Well, it's definitely time. Being a K. Eight principal, I understand what Dr. Williams is talking about, the success that we've seen in elementary schools and carrying that over into middle school with a systemic plan for professional development, systemic plan for the resources that our teachers and principals need. It's time and we will see the support, we will see the success that this plan is calling for. So thank you all for entrusting us to be able to participate in the PELP program. And it will be very well carried out in Birmingham City Schools.
I think to the buy-in piece, just seeing all the different departments come together to work on a common problem. We're seeing the curriculum team working and making sure that these pieces that we've identified are aligned. We are seeing people come to the table with an open mindset for change. And as Dr. Ishman said, it's time and this work is, I mean, it's just a different level of work. And I know we're going to see the benefit of it in the future very soon.
A quick question as well. Can you guys tell me what subject in middle school has become the most problematic?
I don't know if we would say problematic, but math has become a very big challenge for our students. We see the reading growth and it is just undeniably a success story in our elementary schools from third grade literacy all the way up. And it's carrying over into our middle schools. But math has been like a stubborn child. It will go up and down and we've seen some issues there. A lot of it does have to do with professional development. It's just the crux of it. Our teachers have to teach differently and our students have to be challenged to the area of meeting standards. We can't just look at growth. We have to meet the standards that are expected of them and they will.
All right. Ms. President, Dr. Williams, are you still on the call?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask that Dr. Stevens come up. We're moving item H up to item A. And so we'll have Lumi. As you know, AI is everywhere and Birmingham City Schools wants our students to be exposed in using this tool. And so this is a tool that we're looking to implement as part of our work with PELP in our middle schools. Ms. Dr. Stevens, I'll turn it over to you and you have a guest online as well.
I do. Good afternoon, President Collins and Vice President Sullivan, Superintendent and Board Members. These are, first of all, I want to introduce members of our AI team. So we officially have an AI team in Birmingham City Schools and we've been meeting monthly. And these are a few of our members. As we bring before you the first venture into AI, we're using AI Lumi. And we are, we have the CEO of the company of Lumi AI. And I'll tell you, we actually found this software at one of our conferences. Well, Dr. Sullivan really found it and then he was like, you need to go look at this. And we all looked and then Dr. Williams and Dr. Williams. Also, at another conference, saw this software. So we will be asking for approval, but we'll bring them on now, our guests. He will actually be sharing his screen. Mr. Kaepernick, I introduce you to our Board Members and we would like for you to take it from here.
Amazing. Well, Board, everyone, it is a pleasure to meet all of you. Very excited for the conversation and excited to share a little bit more about Lumi. Lumi, background of what we do and what we seek to accomplish. Three goals that we focus on for students is advancing student engagement, improving literacy, and building students' AI skills. When we move over to the teacher side, we also focus on making sure our teachers understand AI. And what comes along with that is post-onboarding, we do bi-weekly meetings with our teachers, which are low-dose professional learning. So as you were talking about some of the strategic goals within Birmingham and having that cohesive professional learning system, this is some of the work that we do with our partner districts. Also, I love the Harvard trip and the efforts up there. To give a little bit of background, two of our leaders on our professional or our district success team are actually Harvard grads. So we have a good relationship and connection there. But as we talk about the program, we focus on taking students through workflows, making sure that we are state standards-aligned and curriculum-aligned. We work very closely with our district administrators, our principals, our teachers to make sure that we have cohesion and alignment across all of the work that we are doing, from the professional learning to the instruction that's happening in the classroom and ultimately the outcomes that we're looking for for our students. All of this work that we do spans K-12. It also spans all subject matters. So we use storytelling as our driver to advance these outcomes for students. And we see engagement go through the roof. We give students agency, we give them voice in the process, all while relating to the curriculum. And we see phenomenal outcomes come out of this. To give one data point in relation to student engagement, our partners in Newark last year, the schools that were using Lumi saw increased attendance at those schools. So just one context as far as what we're able to accomplish. I also want to say, as we are building Lumi, as we are working with our district partners, we are also working in tandem with some of the foremost experts in the space who are advisors to us. Just want to share a few of those people so you have that as well. We're working with advisors like Susan Newman, Professor of Literacy and Early Childhood Education out of NYU. Chris Surf, who is the former commissioner for the New Jersey DOE, also has extensive background in work with Sesame in building out some of their content. Jean-Claude Bressard, President and CEO of Digital Promise. Chris Gutierrez, who leads Professional Learning Sciences and Literacy at UC Berkeley. Miguel Cardona, former U.S. Secretary of Education. And Michael Levine, Early Childhood and Digital Media Scholar, has done a lot of work both with Sesame as well as Nickelodeon. So as we are working with our partners, we are making sure that we are building with the foremost experts in the space and making sure that our districts have access to that knowledge as well. Now, as we talk about this work, I want to start by sharing what the showcase looks like at the end of the school year. This is our key driver and milestone that we get all of our students and districts to work towards. It's a great motivator and then we can back into what some of the details of the work look like to get to this point. Share screen here. Oh, I'm not able to share my screen. I can follow up and send over the presentation if that's easier, so everybody has visibility there. But to give background, before students ever get on the platform in relation to using AI, we are setting up all of the projects aligned with state standards, aligning with curriculum, so that every engagement that a student has with AI is driving towards those outcomes. The AI is also benchmarked based upon that student's grade level and will level up or pull back depending on how that student is engaging and the assessment of how they are performing. All of this is fully visible to the teachers as well as the district. So AI is no longer a black box. Our teachers, our districts no longer have to ask, how are students using AI? When are they using it? They can see every prompt, every question, every engagement.
And excuse me, Mr. Kaepernick, I think you should be able to share your screen now.
Okay.
Because we definitely want them to have visibility into what we saw and why we selected this software.
Absolutely. And one final note that I will share before sharing this. As we think about this showcase, this has also been a great opportunity to bring in corporate and philanthropic partners to be able to bring broader support to our districts. So in this showcase that you're about to see, we had UBS, Prudential, Nike, Paramount, Audible, as well as a handful of others in attendance that were excited about the opportunity to partner with districts that we are working with. So I will share this now so you are able to see.
We don't think you have the right screen share, Mr. Kaepernick.
Oh? Sorry, can you say that again?
We don't think you have the correct screen share.
Oh. Apologies. One moment.
But one of the things that our committee saw in this software above other software for our students is that one of the things that you've got to know how to do, first of all, AI is dumb technology. And when I say dumb technology, it doesn't create content or it doesn't create anything. So the intelligence behind the technology is that you've got to know what to ask and how to ask. And that's a science in itself, AI prompting. So that is one of the things that drove us to this software as we look deeper and deeper. As also the showcases and the sharing of the knowledge and the sharing, the creation that they did. And I'll let Mr. Kaepernick show that right now.
Absolutely. Can everyone see this screen now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I will keep it like this.
Everyone, and welcome to 2025 Lumi Student Showcase.
So to all of the students that are in the stands, you are about to witness some very important history in our school district.
This is Lumi.
Everybody from Shabazz in the building, we crave a chance to have Eagle Academy, George Washington, Carver Brew Street, make some noise. We're gonna turn this up a little something, DJ Camellos.
One of the things that we realized early on with Lumi is by getting students to create stories, we can actually drive student engagement, improve literacy, and build their AI skills. What we're seeing with teachers using Lumi is that we can actually help them advance their own AI skills and understanding, which is also making them more comfortable with how students are using it, how it's showing up in their classroom, and collaborating with it.
This is an opportunity not only for students but for teachers because it doesn't substitute curriculum, it supplements it.
Using AI in the class was a great addition because they were able to take knowledge that they honed from what I taught them and then use it to be more creative and given different perspectives.
Lumi didn't just help me write a story. It helped me believe that my ideas were worth developing.
Not only did it allow me to develop a voice for my concerns and allow me to indulge in my creativity realistically by producing story frames, I was able to see my own transformation from a shy middle school to a confident creator.
From imagination to execution, how to problem solve creatively and how to trust the process.
Lumi is amazing. I had so much fun using the platform. This event was like the most fun of my senior year.
Lumi presents and highlights your creative expressions and ideas and it gives you a chance to tell your story or finish any unfinished stories that you didn't have before. It motivates you.
As we look at the future of creation, if we look at the future of storytelling, these are all going to be skills that they have to have to enter any of those industries, creating access and opportunity for communities and for creators, and that now coming to life.
Is another form of tailing instruction or differentiation. So for your struggling students who get stuck when it comes to plot narrative techniques, Lumi will be the differentiation that you can put in place to help them get past that block.
I used to think that it was taking away the student's opportunity to think creatively, but it didn't do that. It gave them more opportunity by I think even providing more inspiration so that they can build on it and make it stay all.
I understand what my purpose is. And my purpose is to make sure that we remove barriers between children and success.
So wanted to share that so you have a little bit of sense of what Lumi looks like as we get to the showcase and the work in the classroom comes to life. As Dr. Williams was mentioning, part of this is building the AI skills of the students, getting them to understand prompt engineering, how they can use it to help advance them within the classroom, but making sure that AI is never doing the work for them in the process, simply being there to assist them in achieving the academic outcomes.
Okay, so how, what we're asking for approval for is we're asking for a one-year pilot and it will happen in middle schools. And that cost is one hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred. So from January until January of next year is what we're asking for. So we will implement starting January and then, of course, to the end of the school year. And then, of course, it will be one of the, one of the middle school programs in our, our summer programs of offerings as well. At that time, we will determine if we have enough data to proceed because there's just so many AI software out there. We want to know if the teachers like it, students like it, and then before we agree to go on to another year or bring on our high schools. So we want to do a phased-in approach so that we know as we start, you know, learning about AI, because there are going to be, what, twenty, thirty others next year probably. But as we start learning, now, why we like this one? Because of the support that's provided. You could, anybody can have AI and we can just tell it to go chat GPT, do something. However, it's that, that instruction piece that comes with it. That's what makes Lumi AI stands out above everything else. And it even allows the kids to create. They can't get outside of the platform either. So they have to create content in the platform, not only in the platform, but they have, the teacher has to grade in the platform. And that's the piece where AI comes in and helps them. AI comes in and say, hey, you're prompting, look at your prompting, and it gives them a list. So those are some things that they showed to, to our committee. We actually have some students on our committee and I'll let you, Ms. Tamara, I have not, but Ms. Tamara is our newest team member, but some of the things that our students said that are on the committee. You gotta turn your.
We had a student from Ramsey. Her name is Kelsey, Kelsey Murray.
I don't think you introduced everybody.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Of course, we have Dr. Williams, which is the representative for Curriculum Instruction, ELA Middle School. We, go ahead.
Tamara Clark, Technology Integration Facilitator.
Good afternoon. I'm Brittany Tucker, the Director of Information Technology.
So as Dr. Stevens mentioned, we have a senior who attends Ramsey, Kelsey Murray. She attended one of our guidance for AI committees that we've been meeting once a month. So she attended our in-person and she made the statement of she's able to use it in the classroom, but at the end of the day, she understands she needs to know the content that's being taught. Because when it's time to test or assess, she's not able to use AI or she's not able to use any other support. So I thought that was very vital in understanding where the students are at when it comes to making use of AI and best practices.
And so that led us to pick this software. We want a software where it's teacher-guided, instructional-guided, but it teaches you how to prompt. That's the key. You've got to be able to tell AI what you want it to do to get the results that you desire. You've got to be able to tell AI what you want it to do to get the results that you desire. Any questions for us?
We got a couple of questions. We're gonna let Mr. Big Wall go first.
I would be remiss if we didn't recognize who presented here today. Just being honest and being transparent. Thank you, brother. If he can hear me, thank you. And I don't know if I speak for everybody, but I speak for me. Your NFL career, I wasn't a fan of you as a football player. I'm a lifelong Dallas Cowboys fan and you broke my heart. But do understand that as an African American in a predominantly African American city here in Birmingham, you are the type of role model that our children need to look up to. So thank you. I'm gonna applaud him if nobody else does.
Thank you.
Dr. Williams, y'all didn't need him because I'm supporting this 100%. Now, I'm gonna go tell my son that we were on a video call with Colin Kaepernick, but you, you guys didn't need him today. Great job.
That's what I was gonna say. We don't want his fame to sway our decision on the software.
I definitely wouldn't, I wouldn't call it fame. And, and by no, in, in any way do I mean any disrespect because I'm not comparing him to Muhammad Ali. But this man sacrificed his professional football career to stand up for equality in America and he should always be recognized for that.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. I really want to get an understanding of what it is that we're trying, trying to do. It says storytelling or we, what's the primary, I guess, focus? Is it, are we focused on the subject or are we just trying to get people to understand how to use AI? Are we doing both or like, what's the primary focus that we're trying to do with this?
It's all in, I was gonna, yes, please, Dr. Williams.
Good afternoon again. I do apologize for not showing my screen, but you guys know I've been out with COVID. So thank you for your question, Mr. Sullivan. Can you hear me? Can y'all still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So yes, the, 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 the purpose is twofold. So Lumi really is a literacy software in that students have an opportunity to use their AI platform to create through best practices, the whole writing process steps. And Dr. Kay Williams can add to that because they actually have to go through the whole step of drafting revisions and everything to create that graphic organizer. But then it's also the AI part of it. And if you go back to when we presented our PELP, our focus on middle school, student engagement is a huge piece to really changing and transforming learning in the classroom. Yes, we can teach from our regular curriculum, but we want our students not only to learn literacy, but to be able to apply and to be able to manage it for their future lives, as the student said in the video. They need to be able to do more than just learn what happened in the past. They need to create their future. So the AI software, and I know Mr. Kaepernick can also talk to this, this actually supports the learning of literacy and reading standards, but is also a collaboration piece. So now you're integrating your social studies into that because that's a huge part of learning in today's world. So it's twofold. It's really for our academic achievement. But then we're also looking at our middle school piece this year, really focusing on how do we engage our students so that they are coming to school feeling like what they're learning is something that they can use for future work, even thinking about what they want to do in their careers.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna add on to that. One of the things that we have noticed and we want to make sure that we help our district partners with is building this broader alignment. So what we have typically seen is we may have an AI tool in one place. We know that PD typically happens a handful of days throughout the school year that may or may not be aligned with the instruction that's happening directly within classes. That was touched on within the strategic goals and plan here. But what we look at is how we align both what the district is trying to accomplish with the teacher's professional learning, with the engagement that the students are going to have. So as we do our professional learning throughout the school year with our teachers, this aligns with the goals of the district, the instruction that's happening in their classroom, but also allows us to adapt to where there may be gaps or needs in their classroom at any given moment. And that may look differently in an ELA class versus a social studies class versus a AP physics class. Those are all classes that have engaged with Lumi. We've seen success with Lumi. But we want to make sure that all of those are aligned. The other part, just to build in and make clear the alignment with the standards and the literacy component is as we get our district set up before teachers ever get on the platform, our district success team is collaborating with the district to align with their curriculum, their scopes and sequences, lesson plans. And we are building out all of the projects. These can be customized workflows depending on what the district is trying to accomplish or what a teacher is trying to accomplish in any given classroom or any given project. So we have one district, they're doing a narrative project. They have a separate set of projects that are around argumentative writing and we have built out workflows for them there. Each of the steps within those workflows have customized instructions based upon the goals and state standards that we are trying to accomplish that will inform how the AI is interacting with the students to make sure we're helping them accomplish those goals. All of those insights, analytics, how the students are progressing show up on the backend of the platform for the teacher and the district to have full visibility into how students are doing and how they are progressing. The last piece I'll add in here is with each of those steps, the students can also read their own work. And we have an audio component that will capture that, assess their literacy, surface that information to the teacher, and then also provide opportunities to advance that student where they may have gaps in their literacy and where they may be proficient. So really looking at holistic alignment, everything from getting projects set up to the in-class instruction and engagement, to the insights that teachers are getting and aligning that with the professional learning and the district goals.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. That was a thorough answer. I appreciate that. The last question is, I know we're focusing on middle school right now, but how does the, how, how school look? I'm assuming it'd be something a little different or somewhat the same.
So we, I would not even let us get to that point because we want to gather accurate data. So we want to stay in the moment, collect the data, bring it back to you, and then plan out what high school will look like.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Womack, I got you.
Uh, thank you. I have two questions. First question is, have you guys done any research of what districts are already using it? If so, are those districts in the South? And then the second question that I have is that do have, a part of finding out about these other districts, have we even reached out to them to ask their perspective of how they're using it? How long they've been using it and what are their results?
Yes. So as I stated, we all saw it at conferences, but I did a deeper dive. I looked at Clayton County Public Schools. So they are newly coming on. But he also has some more examples of some other school districts. But I chose that particular school because it's in the South and it's similar to us, but it's larger, of course, in demographics. So they love it, of course. Everybody, we, we loved it just to get on. However, now remember, this is a newly formed company. So you're not going to have much historical data, which is why we asked for one year only as a pilot. Let us collect data to see if it works in Birmingham City Schools because you can see, you know, everybody can have good and bad of everything, but it may, it may not work for us or it may work for us. We don't know. So that's why we did, we're asking for this approach.
Ms. Bowman.
Thank you. Mr. Womack answered, asked one of my questions. I would think it'd be helpful for you all to give us a list of the districts they've been involved in just for us to have as a, as background. And the funding source is listed as ETF ATF. Can you talk about how you plan to do that and which, what percent might go to each or how you're thinking about that right now?
Well, first of all, we had to find us, AI is not free. It is a cost to it. So we had to find a funding source and we matched ETF ATF funding to fund AI. So right now, this is the cost and we will put money in ETF ATF every year. It is a technology, we share that funding source with operations and technology. So this is not anything abnormal. It's the soft, and it's what we use to pay our yearly, some of our yearly software fees out of as well as some of our curriculum's yearly software fees that we use at the district level.
And Mr. Kaepernick, I have three sons and I've already sent him a text to say that I'm on a call with you. So thanks for being here today.
Absolutely. Please, please tell him I said hello.
Ms. Harvick.
Before I ask my questions, like my colleagues, I'll just say to our presenter, Mr. Kaepernick, thank you for your bravery, sir. And I'm reminded that many are the plans of a man's heart, but it's the Lord's purpose that prevails. And so I, I, I believe in God's position for us in our lives and hope that you continue to walk in purpose and inspire the next generation of learners, creators, and diversify, amplify those voices. And I want to thank our team here for being innovative, for being innovative and for even if we don't have any like local districts that are doing this, I believe that we can continue to spearhead, going back to PELP. I remember when we at, when we, when we were at PELP, districts that were in inner cities, in the North, in the West, that were coming to Dr. Sullivan and asking us questions about the things that we were doing and the success that we were seeing. So really proud of that. Do have two questions. Under page 51, under the included services, the multi-language integration. So can we talk a little bit about how we diversify that for other learners? And then what we saw, the showcase that we saw on the screen, what does that look for, look like for us at the end of the year? Is there going to be a similar showcase? Is Nike always involved? Do children always get shoes? Like what happens?
So Mr. Kaepernick, I'm gonna allow you to take the first question about the, about the multi-language one.
Yes, absolutely. So the multi-language support, we support over 50 languages directly on the platform. So we have students that are engaging in Spanish, Japanese, Thai, Arabic, I believe Turkish. So they can come on, engage. We have seen them use it both in creating in their native language and that being translated over for their teachers. We have seen them create in their native language, translate themselves, and then create their final story in their native language. So different ways and use cases that has shown up. A lot of that work aligns with the work that our district success team will do with the district as well as the teachers to be able to support that. But we support over 50 languages on the platform. So a broad swath of learners to make sure that we have equity in the process.
And our showcase can look any way we want it to. So I, like I said, I actually kind of talked to Clayton. So it depends on who your partners are, you know? Some people have different partners. So that will be development and process. And like I said, it'll look any way we want to. I will say this, this is an innovation, innovative way of thinking, but we did have a nudge, hard nudge from our superintendent. He was wanting us to hurry up and get here. But, but yes, so we can build that out. And of course, we get in Mr. Kaepernick to come here because we would be remiss because I've seen that you've been at every school district that you have, that you have done their showcases as we saw in some of the examples. But that is completely on us, how we develop it. And I definitely want us to make sure we don't forget our student voice because that's one thing that we insisted on this time being different. We want our students at the table with us to have that voice with us.
I just want to say, I had an opportunity to see this program at the, at a conference in, I think it was California. And I was very, very impressed. Now, I will say I am a lifelong 49ers fan. And at one point in time, I hoped that I would have an opportunity to play for them. But I'm here now, so. But, but genuinely, I met, met Mr. Kaepernick and he, he's a genuinely nice, good guy. He's not like most celebrities that didn't want to take pictures or talk to you. So I really appreciate that. Had a good opportunity, well, good time meeting and talking with him and, and seeing this program. Glad you've made a successful transition into something that is really helping our children. Thank you.
And one thing, Mr. President. I just want to applaud the team because I think it's very, very important to keep up a popular culture with our students. So I really applaud you guys. Like, like Board Member Tisha said, it's important. And I can really see this transitioning to our high schoolers and probably becoming some part of our academies because I could see this go really, really far. So I applaud you guys.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kaepernick. Thank you, Doc Stevens and team. All right.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the time.
Mr. President, next three items are coming from Mrs. Glover. So Mrs. Glover, if you would come up and we'll start with SoftDocs. And most of these are, well, all of them are renewals.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, Board President Collins, Vice President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Sullivan, good afternoon. I have two that will be renewals. The first renewal will be SoftDocs Incorporated. And the recommendation is that approval is granted to renew the E-Trieve Cloud Subscription Contract with SoftDocs in the amount of $65,842.27 covering the period of January 21st through 2026 through January the 20th, 2027. The rationale, the platform is synchronized with the accounting software and is used for routing and processing employee supplements, professional development leave requests and approvals and invoice payment processing and other, among other things. And this will be coming from the general fund. The prior year, though, we're paying $65,842.27 this year. The prior year, the cost was $63,295. In 2024, it was $62,063. Any questions? Thank you. The next item is Harris School Solutions. And for this particular one, it's a renewal as well. The approval is granted. We're asking for approval to be granted to pay the annual software agreement to Harris School Solutions in the amount of $240,449.11 and it will be covering the year of 2026. This particular system, the ERP system, includes the financial and human resource software modules as well as e-school payments for our online payments and ESS, which is employee self-serve. And that particular module have employees could access their paychecks and their W2 information. Most of the state of Alabama utilized this particular platform of Harris School Solutions. For BCS particularly, we've been with this particular vendor for over 25 years. The past payments for this particular one was $229,529 and in 2024, $225,163. And the final item is prospective pay. This will be recommendation. The approval is granted to provide a one-time supplement for extraordinary services to be rendered for full-time BCS professionals and support staff. A payment of $1,000 will apply to all BCS employees who hold an active, regular employee status as of December, that should be 19th, 2025. And it will not include substitutes, the employees that's retiring nor the superintendent for this particular prospective pay. Just to give historical context for the new board members, we've been paying it since 2019, started at 500. Just to give historical context for the new board members, we've been paying it since 2019, started at 500. And it increased gradually after two to three years to $750 for 2024. And for this current year of 2025, it has increased to $3,000. This will be a one-time supplemental pay for all full-time employees. Any questions?
Not a question, but a statement. Dr. Sullivan, thank you. I remember when we, when I came on the board, that $500 gift. And a show of appreciation to us, happy that we're able to get it. Man, most people, most people, man, don't care. And we're seeing that more and more as we look around what's going on in the world. But I am so happy that we as a board are able to come to the table and we're able to fight for our employees as well as our students. And I hope that this beautiful, beautiful bonus and show of appreciation is truly appreciated through the holiday season for our employees. Thanks, Dr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I concur. This is a wonderful thing for us to do. Can you remind me, is it about a $2 million cost to the district?
This year, I projected 3 million, but that's on the upside. But it has been running around 2.5 million. It is available to all active full-time employees. So even the newer ones that's coming on board, because it is considered prospective pay, which means the work that will be done. And with that in mind, what I did was just included a budget of a range of 3 million. But it usually runs 2.5.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Glover, just, I noticed that we, and I've asked you this in private, but I want it to be in public on record. I know we excluding our substitute. Can you just give us, and when I say substitute, I mean our long-term subs, because I know a lot of them are in the job and they are asking, you know, for clarity as to why they are not eligible. So if you could give us a little bit of perspective on that.
I did look in, that's a good question, thank you. I did look into that. One of the things that we did realize and found out was that for substitutes, they are not contracted full-time employees. So they're not eligible for benefits. And as a substitute, it's basically PRN, which means as needed. And because they are as needed and not on contract, that amount cannot be extended to the, to the substitutes. We do have around 200-plus substitutes. But I know that even if it was narrowed down to those that were pretty much doing the, the day-to-day, it's still not a contractual amount or position.
And Mr. Collins, can I clarify just a little bit more? We are able to provide this to our, our staff as, as Mrs. Glover indicated, as prospective pay. So it's paid for work yet to be done. And because individuals are substitutes and they don't have a contract, then we cannot guarantee that they will do work yet to be done if they're not contractually obligated to the district. And so the only way we can provide this support is that we can pretty much guarantee that these individuals will be working after they receive these funds.
Just a follow-up question for clarity. So none of our long-term subs are on a contract for any particular time?
No substitutes, sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Ms. Glover. Next, I'm going to ask Dr. Stevens, is it Dr. Williams? Is you're going to be on to discuss the school status?
I'm on, but Dr. Stevens and I will do it together.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Doc.
Okay. Good afternoon. So we are, do you have the presentation up? Let's see. We are requesting to partner with school status. We currently partner with school status for our attendance. Ms. Ross and her team use them. We would like to approve the payment for $109,760 for a district-wide communication tool. We realize that there's a certain portion of the program that we utilize that enables our teachers to make calls without using their personal cell numbers. And we have the representative with us today to go through a couple of slides about the program. Is she on? Is she there? She should be in the audience. Is she there?
Uh, no, Doc Williams.
Okay, so she did come. So you can go ahead and move through the slides. Next slide. So, next slide. Go ahead. So this is our team. These are the ladies that we work with, Ms. Embling, Spanko and Mrs. Blaine. These tools help to keep families informed. So basically, it's a software that allows them to make calls when students are absent. Go to the next slide. And we just wanted to provide you with some information on what the program does. It's a two-way calling and each family gets a unique phone number. So, you know, a lot of times, teachers don't want to get their personal numbers out. And then it also allows for recording of the call. So there's that safety feature there that we can always go back and listen to the calls. And it's a two-way conversation, not so much always where teachers can't, parents can't call back, but they can get in touch with their student's teacher. Next. And it really is a good platform. And to be honest, we didn't realize how much our teachers were using the program until we kind of transitioned to a different software and then they asked us to bring it back. You can, I think this is pretty much it. So that's it. So are there any questions about school status? Because this is a program that we have been using for, I think, about three years now.
Ms. Bowen.
Yeah, I am a little bit saddened that we don't have any data like we usually ask for when we have something that's, we've been using for three years. Like how many teachers have been using it? What kind of resolution did they have? Were there things around attendance that improved because of these phone calls? Or whatever other tools we used? And, and you mentioned that we might move into something different using it this year. What does that look like? And?
No, we're not going to change anything differently.
Okay.
So let me, a couple of things. The attendance piece is separate. The board has already approved the attendance piece. And what they do is they send a three-day letter, is that right, Mrs. Ross? Out anytime a child is, is absent. This piece is for teachers. So the teachers, when they call parents, that they can have a phone call with the parents and their numbers stay anonymous, right? So, you know, we moved to another platform for our website, which this, which helps, allows parents, students, teachers to communicate with parents rather than using Classroom, Dojo and all of that. They don't have this piece. So we wanted to continue this piece because teachers have asked for it. So data is a little bit different, difficult to pull, how many times a teacher called a parent could be, you know, depends upon the student and why they're calling them. But this provides our teachers with the ability to use their cell phones to call parents without making sure that their numbers are public to everybody. So it disguises their number from the person that they're calling. If that answers your question.
Well, I thought I remembered you saying that the good thing about this was that we would be able to track calls and that we would be able to.
Well, you do. And you're able to, like, for example, if there are conversations that individuals have, oftentimes people will say that some things were said and other things weren't said. And so you have a recording to see exactly what was said. Or sometimes individuals say, I didn't get a phone call. And you have a recording showing that I did contact you regarding your child failing science in the third quarter. So those are the kind of recordings or documentation of the phone calls that we're talking about.
And we can get, I can reach out to them to get some data of data, what utilization we have. The reason we don't have it presented here, because we want to quickly get this back in front of the board for our teachers. They're contacting parents now. And we wanted to make sure that we get this back on for them so that they can still have that ability. So we'll reach out to them and get whatever data pieces that they have as quickly as possible.
Same question about ETF and ATF funding, same thing for this, right?
Yes, it can, it can be used for technology as well as security, as well as construction. So this falls under that umbrella. Exactly. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Unless there's a question.
No.
All right, the next item is green education. Dr. Williams, you have that one as well?
Yes, I do. So this is another part of the strategic presentation from PELP. We presented PELP intentionally because we really wanted this session to really focus on our middle schools. We started with the PELP, then of course, the Lumi AI will start in middle school. Last year, we had an opportunity to partner with Mr. Wendell Green of Green Education Consultancy. He's also online with me today. We utilize his services in the area of high dosage tutoring and professional learning for teachers and mathematics. We all know that mathematics is a focus area. You've had questions about that even as today. So one of the things that we wanted to do was to take like a soft pilot in three of our middle schools where we looked at the data in the spring of 2025 and we saw where their data in mathematics was kind of flat. And we wanted to see if we provided professional learning in mathematics on targeted standards, provided follow-up coaching and support and high dosage targeted tutoring in schools, would it make a difference in the data? So Mr. Green is here to share the results of that three-school pilot. He's going to go through that really quickly. I know we've gone over, but he is online with me and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wendell Green of Green Education.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Can you see my screen, the shared screen?
No, not yet.
They have the screen up. Can you see the screen they have up? It'll go to your slide, next slide. They can transition it. Just tell them to go to the next slide.
Okay, so they have it for me. Okay, guys. Okay. So thank you all for your time, moment of your time, Board President, Vice President, Board Members and Superintendent Sullivan. Again, my name is Wendell Green. I'm the president of Green Education. And I'm very thankful that I did not have to follow Callan Kaepernick in this presentation. Because I don't think anybody's going to be texting saying that they met Wendell Green today. But with that said, go ahead, go to the next slide for me, please. I'm not sure if you all can see it, but I don't see it on my screen.
There it is, Ms. Green.
Okay, it's taking just a second, I think. Great. Okay, so. Yeah, I think that's it. Okay, so we are a educational consulting company as well founded back in 2008. And we provide services in over 70 districts in the southern and midwestern U.S. We have about 80 consultants that's on our team currently, that included advisory leaders. And we're committed to partnerships that reflect growth and measurable results across, with all of our partners. Next slide. So here's a little, a few data points that I wanted to share with you, that of work that we've done in other districts. This is a quick slide that shows some of the data points that we've provided for school districts in Mississippi. We have three districts there that we showed some of the growth from one year to the next. We also have another slide showing some elementary and middle school data points showing improvements with the schools that we provided here. We have show of support with ELA and science and data in those six schools. And we also provided services with high schools. And we have services for ELA math, science, US history, ACT biology, things of that nature. So we can see that we do provide a full-service consulting for not only teachers but for direct support to students for the past almost 20 years now. So we were asked to provide support for Birmingham last year. And we came in in the spring of 2005. And we provided, supported three schools, giving them eight highly-targeted tutorial sessions for mathematics. And that was at Hayes, Wilkinson and Huffman. We also provided a one-day PD service for middle school math teachers. And that was actually a half-day service. And if I may, I'd like to speak on that very quickly. Next slide, I'm sorry. Go to the next one. You went back or something. Keep going. No, keep going, I'm sorry. One more. Yes, thank you. So this is the, some of the services that we provided to Birmingham City Schools last year. We did, like I said, a half-day PD session. And I'll make sure we're on the same slide. Can you back up one more for me, please? Okay, great. And with that, let me get, go to that screen exactly. Give me just one second. I'm going to slide this over to my screen so I'm not looking up at the large screen here. There we go. Okay, so we provided services to teachers. I think it was around 14 teachers that showed up for that service. And that was, like I said, about a half-day. And what I would like to share with you very quickly is just some of the results that we received from them. We do an evaluation on every service that we provide. And these are actual quotes that teachers gave back to us. And I would like to read those very quickly. One quote was, "We wish, we wish we had a full day to go into more detail." Another quote was, "One of the best workshops ever, but I needed more time." Plan for the whole day and other team credits and offer team credits. And the last quote I'd like to offer you is, "Great information, most useful PD I've ever experienced." And again, these are actual quotes from the teachers that were there. And what we would like to do, what they asked for rather, is in the future, they like to provide, they like for us to come in and provide some scaffolding support, differentiation of instruction and real-world activities and give examples on how we would teach standards differently. Next slide. So we were asked to come in and provide those eight days of service to those three schools, Huffman, Hayes and Wilkinson. And in the process of doing that, we did collect some data at the end of the year throughout your state test. Because this is actual data from them. This is not data that we received. This is their data, your data from state test. And what we did was we provided services to 30 students at Huffman. And from those services, we can show 45% of the students moved one level grade, I'm sorry, performance level rather. And 62% of the students showed in both category of three or higher. And of course, if you show growth in the growth category three or higher, you receive at least one full point toward your growth model. In Hayes, we provided 28 services to 28 students. And out of those 28 students, 64% showed a performance level increase. And 72% of the students showed growth in the growth category or category three or four. And again, that was at 72%. At Wilkinson, we had 33 students where we provided services to. Out of those students, 42% of those students increased one performance level. And 78% of those students reached the growth category three or higher. So, next slide, I'm sorry. So with that said, we have, we were asked to provide additional services after those good results that we showed. They wanted us to come back and provide additional services to the district. And they asked us to provide direct student support to middle school in mathematics. They asked us to provide professional learning sessions for middle school math teachers and to provide direct modeling and co-teaching services to those teachers.
So we can go back to the recommendation slide.
Yes.
Yes. So basically, that's, that's our proposal for the board members. We would like to request to, based on the data, as you can see, there were improvement in all three of those schools. And even those schools' report card grades increased as well. Mathematics just continues to be an area of focus for Birmingham City. But we seem to have found a model that works by providing teachers first with professional learning, targeting those standards. It's similar to the model we use with Breakthrough. But then also making sure that we go back and provide that coaching support for teachers and students. Because they work directly with students in those schools. So that is the proposal. I think it was for 200K to partner with Green Professional. We will be working through the network too with all of our middle and K8 schools. Dr. Wetherspoon has been meeting. He is definitely involved in the conversations. Once we have our data. Once we have our data from January, we'll, if board approved, we will direct the work based on the data in the middle school mathematics. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question in regards to the uh, the graph that you are uh, showing. Uh, so that we have in our packet here. Not quite sure, if you can provide some clarification on what it is exactly that we're looking at here. Um, I don't see anything on the, on the X or Y axis for what...
I've seen there is a comparison from the previous year, two thousand four, and a comparison two thousand five. And even though the data doesn't, the scale, the Y-axis is a little uh, broad, so it's harder to see the actual growth. If you see there's a trend where most of the students actually showed improvements across the board from each school. And if you go back to the original document, original uh, slide that showed the actual percentages, you'll see they're reflected even more so there.
So, am I correct when I say that the blue bar graph then represent the previous year and the red or orange represents the current year?
That's correct.
We actually compared the students' um, A-CAP scores from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-three.
And each one of those bars represents an individual student.
That's correct. So, again, this is more like a pilot that we did for the spring. So, it was a short period of time right around spring, just before and after spring break.
Sir, I...
Ms. Bowlen.
One quick question about um, how this will be tied in with the work that we do with um, DM Group on, in math?
Yes, this is, this is very um, intentional, Mrs. Bowlen. We want to partner with Green. Um, that's kind of what we did last year. I really tried to recreate the DM Group work in a short, short cycle. Um, so what this work will look like with DM Group, we've already identified the standards for the spring based on um, high priority yield standards for a spring A-CAP. Once, if approved, the PD and the professional learning will target those standards, making sure teachers understand the content, the depth, the width, the breadth of the standard that they are gonna be teaching, uh, providing that professional learning that they really enjoy. Um, Mr. Green's background is uh, middle school math. So, um, the PD was tailored to mathematics teachers. Once they get the professional learning, uh, we'll work with the network to identify, you know, what schools need the immediate support. Um, they will go in and provide coaching and support for those teachers. And then we will look at those students, looking at those students that have, you know, their potential, just like DM Group, and work with them in an, an additional tutoring session. And that is the whole focus of it. So, we're gonna be partnering with DM Group. It's not gonna work aside from DM Group, it's gonna work with them, just like we did in the spring.
All right. All right, thank you, Dr. Williams. Uh, next, I'm gonna ask Dr. Drake to come up, uh, Schools PLP. And I think that she has uh, some principals with her as well as Dr. Gardner uh, to talk about a Schools PLP. And I think these principals are using their local Title I money for this purchase.
Good afternoon. Dr. Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan, Board President Collins, Board Members. Today, uh, we have uh, Dr. Gardner, Dr. Goldsmith, we know the high school principal, and Ms. Davis, Woodlawn High School Principal. And um, they would like to renew the contract with Schools PLP. Um, they will be using their Title I funds to do that. At this time, I asked Mr. Gardner to give us a little bit more um, information about Schools PLP. And then the schools will let, uh, you know, how beneficial it was to them last year.
Good afternoon, President Collins, Vice President Sullivan, uh, Dr. Sullivan, Superintendent Board. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. Uh, and I would like to congratulate the district entirely for the work that they've done over this past school year. Great job, great report card grade. I'm proud uh, of, of, of the work that you all have done, uh, being a former employee of this district. It makes my heart glad to see this happening in Birmingham. Uh, again, uh, thank you very much. Um, you, we have a slide, we have a slideshow that's showing you. Basically, this first slide is, is about the uh, the schools that are involved, average grade and, and the average completion, completions rate. The, the rest of this presentation is simply outlining the, the characteristics of this program.
Dr. Gardner, I know you have a really booming voice, but use the mic for those who are watching online.
Yes, sir. The, uh, the rest of the slides in this, in this presentation is basically outlining the characteristics of this program that uh, in, inspires students to engage with it and to remain engaged and to complete the process at a very, very high rate. And one thing that I could say about, about this particular piece, every school that used this program showed some gains, that some had more gains than others. But the program is very beneficial because of the, the way it is, it is outlined, it is laid out for students. We uh, we, we call it, we, we compare it like Netflix Meet Education. The, the, it's small chunks, video, text. It's, and, and it's fed, it's given to the students in a way that they can, that they can uh, relate, they can engage. This program, uh, if you have a, a, uh, ELA or subgroups that are not eh, uh, proficient English speakers, this, the, the, the content, all of the content in this program can be translated into one hundred, over one hundred different languages. You could, they, it will read it to them, they can, they could, they could speak to it and, and translate it back or, whatever way that they need to, to hear this, this, this instruction in over one hundred different languages. It's, it's, it's a game changer. I can sit here and tell you all of these things, but the proof is in the pudding. You have, your high schools have, have done this, that are using this program have done some great work with this. And even uh, uh, other districts around this area have, have uh, experienced great success using this program. So, I, I can tell you, but I need you to hear from the practitioners. They, they can tell you what they did, how they applied it, how they implemented. Dr. Lyons is not here, but he has been the longest-standing person. Uh, Huffman has been the longest-standing school in the district to use this program. And he came up and for the last three years, he, he, hi- his, his work has, has, has been proven to be very fruitful with the, with the implementation of Schools PLP. I'll turn it over to the principals at this time.
Dr. Goldsmith.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, primarily, we know that we used it to look at uh, for our twelfth graders who were somewhat caught behind the curve with their graduation, needing additional credits. Um, and we know that we start tracking students as soon as they come to ninth grade. So, you know pretty much who needs what as they going from ninth to tenth, eleventh to twelfth. Uh, kids need multiple platforms to try to make up their credit. School PLP is different from some of the other platforms that are provided, but I believe that every child learns differently. And so, therefore, they have to have different ways to receive uh, the knowledge that they need to get those credits. I know that this year, we can brag at about an eighty-nine point oh seven percent graduation rate, which is not what I want because I want a hundred percent. In order to get a hundred percent, you have to have multiple ways to attack the problem with students. Some students tend to get left behind by some things that we do as far as programs that we have. So, I've been looking for programs that have multiple ways to reach those kids. It uses sizable chunks, videos, and things for those kids. They uh, like, for instance, I can't sit there and read large paragraphs and get it. Some students are visual, some students are auditory, some students can state. However they are, it addresses that. And this program uses multiple ways to reach them. And um, I have several students on it now, uh, which will try to get us to that ninety-seven percent graduation rate this year. So, uh, it's a great program and um, we love it and we know.
Sorry, good, good afternoon, everyone. Um, last year was our first year with Schools PLP and we had approximately eighteen of our seniors who completed and twenty-five of our juniors who completed Schools PLP. And what our focus is this year is to definitely get over the hump with the CCR. Making sure, we've been on the upswing each year, but making sure that every student, every single student uh, finishes with that credential. Um, and we also were able to bring our graduation up from seventy-nine, I mean, excuse me, from seventy-five percent to eighty percent this year. So, we are on the upswing. But you do have to be very strategic in how you plan because those students are working on that on top of their um, other classes. So, we have a strategy where we'll build, where we are actually um, assigning a facilitator to that class to, that meets with them every day so that there can be some accountability to make sure that they complete the course so that our sixty-three percent will go up to at least eighty-five or ninety percent.
I, I would like to say that the, the CCR rate is, is being converted into graduation rate in this next school year, am I right, Dr. Sullivan? Uh, this, this program goes a long way in helping kids to uh, to, to reach that goal. And, and it, the, the transit rates in large urban districts uh, uh, kind of put students behind the eight ball because you may have students who start the ninth grade at Huffman and by the time that they are seniors, they have been in five of the seven high schools in the district. That, and, and you can look at their transcripts and they may have taken six or eight CTE courses, but they don't have a, they're not close to completing the pathway. Or they may have two courses in the pathway and need that third. And they, but they don't have a lot of room when they're scheduled to catch that third. Or they may have, they, they may have failed the third class and need credit recovery. So, the, these are options that Schools PLP provide. Not only credit recovery, but grade repair. You can keep, in this program, you can catch a kid before he or she fails the course for, for a marking period. I know when I was a high school principal, my ninth graders, the, uh, at least thirty percent of the ninth graders failed biology and algebra one. So, we had to catch them up before their senior year. And so, i- if you got that many kids that are, that are failing that biol- that algebra one and biology, the kids, it's not fair to the kids coming in because you're loading classes up with students who had opportunity and could not, and, and couldn't make it happen. They gotta go back and get it again. And some of them fail below the uh, the uh, credit recovery mark. So, it is, this, this program provides you with myriad ways to address a student's need and, and prescribe something that, that, that is user-friendly and give them the opportunity to, to stay on track.
Mister, Mister Wallman.
I just got a comment. Um, and I think I made this comment at our last work session of how I am sitting here and listening at all of these different tools and programs that are preventing high school dropout. And I'm sitting here listening and if this was in our school system, Dr. Sullivan, in two thousand four when I was in school, there would have been no reason why Antoine Wallman would have dropped out of high school. And I'm looking at how it is that on every corner of our school system that when we hear people speak about, well, my child is lacking in this, well, we got this for him. Well, I don't have this resource, well, we have that for him. And so, I only say that to say this is that the only way that we can continue uh, to be even more a better district and an example to other districts is keeping stuff like this in. And so, Dr. Sullivan, thank you to you and your team for making sure that our uh, students here at Birmingham do not become a part of the statistic and that they won't be sending those prisons that the uh, that the governor's trying to be in.
Amen. All right, thank you, thank you.
No, 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 ain't, ain't no way. Willie Goldsmith sitting at that table and I don't say something to him. Dr. Goldsmith, uh, while I have the opportunity to publicly acknowledge the great work that has gone on that went on to high school, I think the state report card grade is evidence of what happens when people come together, work hard, and do what's in the best interest of our children. Thank you, brother.
Ms. President, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Wimbish if she would come up uh, with Classworks, this is a renewal. Ms. Wimbish? I think that one is not working, Ms. Wimbish. Oh, yes, it is, okay.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Board President Collins, uh, Vice President Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan, and Board Members. Good afternoon. I want to say good evening this time. Um, we are presenting, I have Justin Shelton here with me. He is from Classworks and so, this is as Dr. Sullivan stated, a renewal. Uh, the recommendation is to continue to contract with Classworks. They provide us a comprehensive data platform for our students with disabilities. We utilize it for universal screening and also assist us with crafting personalized learning for those students where it's appropriate, uh, looking at them in the areas of reading and math. Uh, this uh, agreement is not to extend a hundred thousand dollars for one year. Will be coming from our federal funds for special education. So, I'm going to allow Justin to go over our um, engagement with the program, go over some data as well, and then have any questions at the end.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, there we go. So, real quickly for, we are a digital platform. We're working with your students that are at the most need. And as Dr. Wimbish had said, we're providing a secondary assessment. We're doing progress monitoring with your students, uh, evidence-based interventions, and then providing a lot of data with, with what we're doing. On top of that, we are a well-regarded company. We receive the highest ratings for validity and reliability from the National Center on Intensive Intervention. We're also endorsed by the Council for Administrators of Special Education and we've been proven on multiple lists, including Evidence for ESA. Our three main goals, working with Birmingham City Schools and their Special Education Department. One is to foster student growth and outcomes. Two, to deliver consistent progress monitoring so that we can gauge how they are responding to all of this work so that we can make adjustments uh, quickly. And then to provide real-time data to all of the members of the IEP team. This means administrators, teachers, students, and parents. Looking at some of the data that we've had, this is for this school year. Usually, I like to come in and kind of show where that growth is, but we haven't started the winter testing period yet, but I did want to show what, what we're doing. Uh, for the screening piece, we've had about two thousand students that have been identified needing that secondary screener with about fifty percent of those falling underneath that twenty-fifth percentile. And that is for both language arts and mathematics. Now that we've identified where those, those students are, we have about eight hundred students in language arts that start working on the individualized learning paths so that we can close those learning, uh, those learning gap skills that they have. In language arts, they have mastered within eighty percent or better uh, almost two thousand skills, which is fantastic. And that is really how we should try to make sure that we're fostering that growth. With mathematics and about seven hundred students, a whopping almost twenty-three hundred. So, we start seeing the growth that is happening there as we close those skill gaps. And then we look to make sure that we're consistently progress monitoring. So, weekly to make sure that if they are not responding to the work that is being done by the Special Education Department, we're catching it quickly. Within a couple of weeks as opposed to waiting until the next screening period or until an IEP mir- uh, meeting. So, we have about seven hundred and forty-seven students that are being monitored for language arts and six hundred and forty-one that are being consistently monitored for mathematics. And the key thing, as we looked at some of these key areas, both with the screener, hey, here are the weak areas that we need to do. We're seeing those skills being mirrored in the instruction that they're working with. And then we see that mirrored as well in the progress monitoring. So, making sure that we're seeing a consistent flow of targeting the weakest areas so that we can get the most growth. A program is only as good as it's being used. And so, fidelity becomes a big part of that. So, part of the data that we also provide is usage and user engagement. So, in Birmingham City, we have over two thousand distinct student users with uh, some of our highest-performing ones coming from the high schools. And out of those students, they've had almost fourteen thousand logins. The better part of that is seeing the hundred and forty-four school staff, so teachers that are logging in with over fifteen thousand logins. So, that is fantastic. One of the key things I like to look at here is the days of the week. If you see that number one days that the students are using for number one and two, so Thursday and Tuesday are matching up with what the teachers are doing. So, my teachers are looking at what my students are doing. It differentiates on that number three, number three for teachers on Monday, but that's also fantastic as well because that shows that they're going in, that they're preparing for the week, they make sure that they're doing the right things. And now that we have all of that, we're making sure that our teachers have all the data that they, that they need to see how those students are performing, what their strengths and weaknesses are, and how they're responding. But we also, for all of these teacher reports and data dashboards, we have counterpoints that the students and parents can see as well because it's important that everybody is talking the same language and the same data. is talking the same language and the same data. That's why we prevent surprises and make sure everybody's marching toward the same goal, and then supporting your teachers and staff with continual professional development. That is what we do here, and we've been very excited to work with their team, and they've been doing fantastic work, and we hope to continue that. Questions?
Any questions? Sounds good. Thank you. Ms. President, the next few items are coming from Dr. Stevens. Dr. Stevens, many of these are renewals.
Good afternoon again. They're all renewals except the last one. So these are our next five items at a glance, and we'll now go over them. The first one is just our technology ticketing system, but we're not alone in using this. It's how we track our data, it's how we define if technology is serving our customers and our clientele well. But this software is also used by purchasing, accounts payable, sped, HR, and federal programs. So we're asking, we're asking for a cost not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is because Ms. Glover is going to bring on some additional pieces in finance, and we want to make sure her license is covered. Now, I can show you the technology metrics that we actually get from here so you can see, these are the three things that I look at to tell our team how well we're doing. So it tells us, for us, we have defined an SLA of three days. That means we're get to you in three days to solve your problem, your technology problem. So right now, I think I pulled it all the way up until, right, last month. So right now, we're ninety-six point one percent of that goal. And not only that, we want to make sure that our customers are happy with our service. So we also look at that metric, and we get this from Fresh Desk. And we use these KPIs to compare ourselves with the Council of Great City Schools to tell us how we're doing, equivalent to other school districts similar to us. Any questions about Fresh Desk? The next one is just our firewall renewals. We now have three devices that we use. We went from two to three, and so we just kind of use this for traffic shaving, bandwidth control, and also we use it for VPN. We actually went to the three devices, you know, during the COVID period, and so it was great. So now we're able to allow more people to VPN to the network in a secure manner. But this is simply a renewal as well. The next one is also a renewal. It is Checkpoint. Checkpoint, we use two products from Checkpoint. One is our endpoint security on the desktop itself, but we also use Office 365 email protection. We actually wrote, we use this, our cybersecurity grant, we actually wrote that grant, and it's causing a little issue because it is AI-driven. So like, if somebody emails you and they've never emailed you before, it kind of quarantines you and you have to kind of say, it's okay. So a lot of times, we've seen that we fine-tuned it a little bit too much, and, you know, we had to let back off of that.
Is that the reason why every time I get an email, it says, "Look safe" when it comes from Birmingham? I think. I get that a lot.
Yes, yes. So it still tries to, it keeps us safe because we know the email is one of the things. And one thing that we do in Birmingham City Schools, we allow all our kids to have emails. So that's one reason this has been a really good product for us. Any questions? Okay. The next one is DECEPT 10. We actually got this three years ago. We piloted it three years ago based on our cybersecurity grant. And so now we're wanting to purchase it again. It has proven to be one of our place, our cybersecurity posturing. And what I mean by that is they have these devices that they put in our network, and basically it has these fake IPs out. But some of the things that it has done for us, it allowed us that our security door access needed upgrading and some more things needed upgraded, some things that we couldn't see. So this has been a great product, and we want to continue to use it. We do penetration testing, and another thing that we make sure, we're now trying to turn on multi-factor authentication for our staff. And we use zero trust. I mean, we trust no computers on our network. And the cost of this for the three-year consultant is one hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. And these are the things that it, that they provide as a service for us. So it's been a really good product. They are, they were a startup company out of Leeds, so I'm glad that we have partnered with us. So last but not least, I'm going to ask Dr. Willis to come up, and I think, Dr. Williams, are you still online?
Yes, ma'am.
So this will be a new product for the school district, but I'm excited about it. And the name of the product is Naviance CCLR. And it's actually, the CCLR is actually college career and life readiness. So Naviance is a Power School product. And just to give you a point of reference, another software that's similar to it that we also use in the district is Cooter. So with Naviance, and one of the reasons that, from a technology standpoint, and I'll let Dr. Williams and Dr. Willis speak to you from a user standpoint for our students, but from a technology standpoint, it's integrated. So if you're in Power School, you're in Naviance. And that is, that's one of the perks that I like. With Cooter, that integration is harder. It's really integrated through clever. So a lot of times, we were not able to give access to people that maybe wanted to look at it or to do different things. But with Naviance, by it totally already being integrated with Power School, that won't be an issue. So we should be able to see better student outcomes, that collaboration piece, so anybody that is already in our Power School, that have access to our Power School data, that have access to our Naviance data. And like I said, the interoperability with our learning management system, but also the, you know, SIS with Power School. And one of the other things that it does is that if you have a scholarship, you can upload the scholarship in Naviance and make it available. So I'll let Dr. Williams and Dr. Willis kind of talk why that's important in our school district.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Good afternoon again. Yes, Naviance is a platform that provides students the opportunity to explore colleges' majors, career options, based on their interests and strengths. They also have the opportunity to take personality as well as Strength Finder assessments to identify suitable career pathways. And it also provides an opportunity for data-driven insights to college admission chances based on their GPA, test scores, and historical trends. Also, it helps students to align high school courses with college and career goals. It also streamlines the process where they can request transcripts, track application deadlines, and manage letters of recommendation. For counselors, it's an opportunity for counselors and administrators to monitor student progress and identify gaps with the students and their interests. For families, families can view their plans and support decision-making of their students. And the last part about it is students that have actually engaged have shown to be more comfortable and confident in utilizing the system and making post-secondary choices.
Yeah. Any questions? I'm glad to see that we have a program now in place that's already integrated into the system for Power School. I am glad to see that it has the components that we've talked about, that includes what Cooter has generally provided. Are we currently using this in any way right at this moment within the system?
No. So we will be bringing this on in January, and the fifty-six thousand is a prorated fee because, you know, it includes the setup, but it also includes training, online and virtual training. So we'll bring it on. But then it'll be added, you know, when we come to do our yearly Power School renewals, at that point, it'll become part of our Power School suite of offerings.
Okay. So, I mean, in the, in January, then, will there be a small number of schools that will be going ahead and getting started, or what's the rollout looking like for this?
The rollout looks like we want to use it in all of our high schools because we want them to take advantage of the scholarship opportunity immediately since we're bringing it on in January. And remember now, there's no uploading or anything. It sits, it will sit inside of Power School. So there's, you know, so we are anticipating that we should be able to bring it up quickly. But we will have to train, you know. Of course, training is always the biggest hurdle. So we want to make sure that all our counselors, all our students, all our families are trained properly.
Okay. And so I guess the training will go ahead and start taking place during the summertime, or?
No.
It's going to start in January, right?
Yes, sir.
It's going to start in January, okay.
Once it's board-approved, once we've given board approval, which, you know, hopefully we'll have that next month, and then from that standpoint, we will, you know, issue our purchase order and reach out to Power School, hey, let's turn it on, so that when January, when we come back in January, we at least want it to be up and functioning and we start the training process then.
Got you. How soon do you anticipate onboarding middle schools?
Well, we, our first plan was to get high schools onboarding because we know they've been in the lead, and the scholarship component is really what was key here. So we want to do that first, but I don't want to speak for Dr. Williams and Dr. Willis.
So I'll defer to Dr. Williams on that one.
Yes, once we get it up and running in high school, we definitely want to explore our opportunities from middle school. But just remember, the key difference between Naviance and Cooter is Cooter is the K-12 piece, whereas Naviance really is focusing on that transition from high school to college. So that's the real reason we want Naviance, because we want to make sure that we start capturing that data and providing all of our high school students opportunities to expand beyond high school.
All right. Thank you, thank you. And then finally, I'm going to ask Mrs. Ross to come up. This is our, this is also a renewal for the Twenty-third Street Missionary Baptist Church for our drop-out and recovery program.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is just the annual renewal for the lease for the Twenty-third Street site of the Student Success Program. This may be one of the second-to-largest sites we have, Dupe being the first one. They usually run between twenty to twenty-five students at the non-traditional high school for the Student Success Program. We have six teachers and again approximately about twenty students annually, and the contract amount is for twenty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Thank you. Ms. President, that concludes our presentations for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Sullivan. With that said, I will announce our upcoming board meetings. We will have a special call shortly after this meeting, but our next regular scheduled board meeting will be December ninth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM. Our work session Tuesday, December sixteen, at one PM. This meeting is adjourned. I'd like to welcome you all to our special call board meeting. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Mrs. Harville and followed by our pledge of allegiance. Ask everybody to stand.
All heads bowed. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, for an opportunity to gather together to do the work of our children, support our schools, support our community. We thank you, Father God, for sound leadership. We ask, oh, Lord, that you would continue to unify us, breathe a spirit of cohesion in this place. We ask you to dispel any dissension, any plan of the enemy to destroy what it is that you have us preparing for your children. We thank you in advance. We thank you for the success, and we thank you, Father God, for the fortitude to forge ahead in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the love of the Lord.
The mission of Birmingham City Schools is to guide all students to achieve excellence in a safe, secure, and nurturing environment. At this time, we will move to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes?
None at this time, Ms. President.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has probably been moved by our Big Walt, and seconded by Mr. Willmax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Our agenda is approved. Now, it is recommended that we approve item number five, and that is to authorize the board, to authorize the finance department to make a one-time lump sum payment of one thousand dollars to each BCS employees who hold an active regular, active regular employment, employee status as of December eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Substitute employees and BCS employees retire on or before December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five will not receive this supplement as well as the superintendent. This one-time payment is for prospective service to be rendered by BCS employees. Do I have a?
Moved. Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Williams.
Walt.
And seconded by Mr. Willmax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will move right along to, yes. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you to the board for approving this item. It is beneficial to our staff members. I was actually over at Carver High School, and I had one of the custodians come up and said, "Dr. Sullivan, are we getting there?" I said, "Just be patient. It is on the agenda and it's part of the budget," and it really truly does make a difference for our employees, particularly our employees who are on the lower salary range. So thank you to the board for approving this. Thank you to our finance department for working with us to find the funds for this to support our employees. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. With that said, we are certainly glad that that was approved. I know I get the same thing, Dr. Sullivan. So we'll move on to our next item. Item number five is, I mean, six is Dr. Sullivan's superintendent's contract. Can I ask somebody to move the item?
Move the item.
Second.
The item was moved by board member Williams.
Wilson.
Wilson, I'm sorry.
Just said Big Walt.
Yeah. And seconded by board member Harville. Is there any discussion? None?
Roll call.
Well, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Can I move the item?
Well, I was making one statement, if you don't mind. And so I think one of the things I had, I've talked about before, I think, and...
And so, I think, one of the things that had, I've talked about before, I think, at, and to great length as far as the board, that I think there are certain practices and processes that we have in place that are not as efficient as they should be in regards to contractual agreements and addendums and things of that nature, that it would be most beneficial if we had a more robust conversation around this and what that entails. Whether it be year in, year out, since I've been on this board, we have made some amend, addendums, we've added changes to contracts and so forth, rather than fulfilling the full requirements of that time of the contractual agreements are concerned. My own concern is that, I said again, that I would like for us to do something a little more robust, do our due diligence in regarding to what this looks like, before continuing to make these changes year in and year out. And so, I just wanted to make sure that I said that, I think it would be, be most beneficial of us at the board to talk a little bit more in detail about this moving forward.
Mr. Willis?
Again, the data don't lie. What has happened in Birmingham City Schools over the last few years has been absolutely incredible. No magic fix to it. It goes to leadership and the hard work of educators, superintendent, his team, and the students of Birmingham City Schools. We must have stability in order to continue to grow. My way of showing support to our students in the best way we can show it today is voting in the affirmative on what's before us. Thank you.
Ms. Harville.
And I just wanna also make a couple comments, going back to the work that Mrs. Bohm and our colleagues did on the committee that she chaired, and the changes that we made when we first came in four years ago with the changes and the metrics that we've included in the evaluation. So when we talk about robust, I think that we've, we've make, we've made those steps, and we've agreed to those things. And we're going, we're in year two now of our, our five-year plan, and we're continuing to work that plan, and we have those metrics built within. And every so often, we're getting those updates, we're getting those updates from the team to see what that looks like. And again, we've, you know, for the last couple weeks or so, we've been touting and really proud of the work that we're doing, and we want that to continue. And so.
I still want to.
We wanna continue to support.
And, and, and my, my statement has nothing to do with not supporting. It is all about processes, being more comprehensive, more focused on how we're doing some things. And I've been very clear about that, I'm not going any more detailed regarding that. But I do think we can do even better. I know we can. And I'm thankful for this team, the entire team here, but BCS and the staff and the superintendent for the work that has been done. But again, I think there are some things that we can do better, and should look at that in more detail about what that looks like. That's all.
All right. Vote. You've heard the recommendation, it's been moved properly, second. I'm gonna take a roll call vote, Mrs. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Womax.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Harville.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Please note that that motion carries with seven yeses and one abstention. That motion carries. Thank you. Yeah. Dr. Sullivan.
Mr. President, to the board, I wanna say thank you for your commitment in moving this work forward. Our team has done some really amazing things over the last few years. I have been in the school system for thirty years, and, and many of the people who I'm looking at in the audience have worked alongside just many of those years, and we have seen the good, the bad, and ugly in Birmingham City Schools. And we have learned from those things that we shouldn't do, and we have implemented some of those things that we thought worked really well. And I cannot say enough about the work that's happening in our schools, but also the support that our schools are getting. You know, Mrs. Harville mentioned Washington K-8 is just one example, but that's one example of, of schools that are really pushing the needle on academic performance. We are not, to Mr. Billups' point, where we need to be. We can be doing so much better, but I think that anybody who looks objectively and see where we came from and see what we are, can see that we're moving in the right direction. We are getting national attention around the work that's happening in Birmingham City Schools, and I wanna thank the board for their commitment in moving this work forward. Thanks.
Mr. Wilson?
I just wanna publicly acknowledge, it's hard to do, Sherman, Huffman Vikings. Defeating my well-known dragons. Congratulations to you all. We are so excited about basketball season. I don't know if that, Mr. Sullivan is gonna speak about Parker, but Parker came up a little short. And what a great season, what a great program. And again, we look forward to continuing to support our student athletes.
So, I guess I was gonna give us an opportunity, if we had any announcement, I thought we was gonna be talking about. Okay.
It wasn't announcement time yet, but, again, Dr. Sullivan, I wanna thank you for your leadership. So many people are excited about the work, and we have a lot of partners, and so it has been a collective, and so many, you know, can take credit for the things that are being done, or at least having played some type of role. But thank you. It doesn't happen without your leadership, without this team, without this team supporting, and instructional superintendents supporting the principals, and the principals supporting the teachers, and the teachers supporting the students, and parents being at that table as well. But thank you, and we're happy to continue this, this work for the next few years and beyond.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just real quick, yeah, I know Big Walt had mentioned about Parker, that they had too many turnovers, and they were, were still in the game, still in the game, but what a great season. But I do wanna say thank you to Dr. Sullivan and the work that we're doing. I'm the type of person, you know, you always wanna give accolades when they're due, but, you know, you can't always spike the ball, or we're spiking it right now. And I think that's okay to do, because we have a lot of great staff and a lot of great people that we work with. But let's continue to, to work hard. Definitely, I wanted to, I wanted to see us to continue to move forward, and let's focus on that. Now, the numbers were great, now it's time to look forward and continue to work. So, that's all. Thank you again.
Mr. Billups?
Just wanted to say, had a chance, chance on last week to, to visit a number of our schools, a number of different opportunities with, to recognize our students. On last week, had a chance to, to join Woodlawn High School in their senior installation day of one hundred seventy-four students, in recognition of this, their final year. And as a student of Birmingham City Schools, been also Chief Pickett, who was also in attendance to give the keynote for that, that afternoon. And then also, the number of nearly eighty students who were part of the, had another opportunity with Birmingham Promise to have a roughly eighty students to complete their internship period, or will be completing their internship period for this semester with Birmingham, with the internship with nearly fifty different employer partners across the metropolitan area as well. And then also had a chance to participate in the ribbon-cutting ceremony at North Birmingham Public Library, in recognition of the North Star. They're part of the twenty million dollar reinvest grant that was in partnership with the city of Birmingham, and a number of other organizations were part of that, and helped with workforce development across that area, adult education, youth education, more programming as well. And so, just had the great opportunity to meet with those families, and also with those area students who will be involved with the work, and those partners being involved with the work there in the community.
Ms. Harville?
A couple quick announcements. Got a chance to highlight Washington K-8, but also want to shout out Hemp Hill Elementary School. They just received their highest grade, and so it is a ball of energy and excitement over there as well. And just based on where I live, you know, you get to talk to students and ride bikes and play basketball with them, and just continue to encourage them, and see that excitement that they have for where the school is moving. And so kudos to everyone who has played a role in that. And also want to, Ramsey has moved up to, I believe, a ninety-four A, and so congratulations to Ramsey, and also congratulations to Ramsey on another championship. And lastly, Mr. President, just want to show some gratitude and thankfulness for everyone this week, and ask that you be blessed as you spend time with your families.
Now that we're officially doing announcements, congratulations to all schools in District Seven, there are no failing schools in District Seven. Congratulations to Dr. Randall in Jones Valley Middle School. What Dr. Randall and her team has accomplished at Jones Valley has been absolutely phenomenal. There was a time that a lot of people wanted to give up on Jones Valley, and Dr. Randall has changed the culture. The attitude of, of her staff and her administration has been wonderful, has been nurturing. And Jones Valley is becoming something that we all can be proud of. So just wanted to acknowledge, there are no failing schools in District Seven.
So I wanna take this opportunity to announce our committee chairs of our prospective committees. And I wanna thank all of the, the chairpersons for volunteering, and all the members that agreed to be a part of these committees as we work to continue to improve Birmingham City Schools. So for our superintendent's committee, we're gonna give Ms. Bohm a break this time. And, and ask Mrs. Harville to chair our committee, which she's graciously accepted. And that committee will be made up of Ms. Harville, and as well as all the other committee chairs. For our finance committee, we're gonna tap Ms. Bohm, but once again, to chair our finance committee, along with Mr. James Sullivan and Ms. Harville to be a part of that as well. For our operations committee, we are gonna switch it up there a little bit, and let Big Walt, Mr. Wilson head our operations, asking Mr. Sullivan to still be a part of that. And we're also asking Mrs. Williams to be a part of that team as well. And for our policy committee, we're gonna, we have, Ms. Foy has agreed to chair our policy committee, along with support from Mr. Will, I mean, Mr. Womax, and also Mr. Billups. So I thank you all for agreeing to be a part of these committees, so we can continue the work that we've done in Birmingham City Schools. I wanna just add that, you know, you know, being an employer isn't as important that we communicate to our employees, meaning Dr. Sullivan as an employer of this board, the confidence that we have and the appreciation for the work done. We all know that there's so much more, and I think that there, I think he is, I think that's a primary goal of his, and I think that's what's unique about, I've worked with a few different superintendents during my time here, and I, I can say that I, you know, having worked with one, not, you know, disparaging any other superintendent that we work with, but to have the, the type of dedication and focus to, I mean, really wanting to see Birmingham City succeed and, and be successful, and I appreciate that. And I think this approval of your contract is the board's way of communicating, not only to you, but also to the staff and to our public, that this board supports the work that you have done, you and your team, and the work that we're looking forward to doing. And we plan on pushing you even further and harder. And I wanna thank all of my colleagues for the robust conversations that we had around this. This is not something that we just, you know, just come to easily. And I can say, I'm usually a really hawk on this superintendent's contract, and so I can honestly say that this year was a really, really easy year for me to make that decision and support you and your work. So thank you. And last but not least, yes, Huffman High School, they are the, the back-to-back city champions. And Ms. Harville said, though, I wanna make this note, the girls are the champions for the city, not the boys. The boys won, Huffman Boys won that, so we are certainly excited about that. So with that being said, I wanna announce our, our upcoming board meetings. Like I said before, December ninth, twenty twenty-five, at five-thirty is our regular scheduled board meeting. Our work session will be December sixteen, at one PM. Thank you all for your service, and be safe.